Yep, go ahead. Go ahead.
The September 22nd, 2021 regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen will come to order. You'd like to join us in the presence of the leader?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have two sets of interviews, but I think some people may have not been able to make it at the last minute, so just as a reminder, also as a reminder for you guys, Jeanne Pfeifer is also interested in a legislature health district position. There's only one. You get Erin Lasky for interviews. June, if you had time to think about and you don't think I'm on the spot, but if you did want to sit down from the board, then there'd be two spots, but it could also be after the interview. Jeanne, would you make that for them?
No, I would like to. We have a meeting tomorrow night, and so I was going to ask the board how to do that and tell them that there were two very good people that could fill this spot for Stonington. So I'll let you know after the legislature board meeting tomorrow night.
Oh, you're perfect. And...
I can give you some of that formal processes and, you know, other than a letter or something.
Oh, yes, no, and we can talk to Jeanne. You guys obviously saw who her credentials and things huge different than Erin in skill set, but also very interested in the experience of health in developing countries and health services. They're both great candidates. Okay, so we can skip that unless Jeanne comes later. And then also for planning and zoning. So so far, we've had three interested candidates, and thank you so much, Stephen, since you're also the one here, and we've already gotten to to talk. But just I think we shared anytime we have more than one candidate for a position, we started a process where we like to interview people during the Board of Selectmen meeting because for full transparency, and then usually at the following Board of Selectmen meeting, we'll make a decision. Given the other two candidates are Andy Meek and Marjorie Selinger. Andy, we thought was going to be here, but maybe something came up for this meeting, and then Marjorie Selinger, who actually interviewed at the next Board of Selectmen meeting, which will be October 13th, because she had a prior work commitment, so she couldn't be here tonight. So then we'll make a decision at our final October Board of Selectmen meeting. So it's been a long process, and thanks for hanging in there. So Stephen, if you don't mind, you can stay there or come forward, whatever's better for you. We just have three questions, so we'll take turns. You got a chance to answer them and then ask us any questions you might have. So, Deb, do you want to start?
Sure. Thank you for coming, Stephen.
You're welcome.
So we would like to know what pertinent experience you have serving on a board, a commission, or in another volunteer capacity, and in responding, please expand on what roles you've played and what impact you think you're having.
Well, I actually haven't. I was at one time the president of my condo association in Maryland, plan of woods, so I guess, you know, I went through the different board positions there and, you know, but I really haven't served on any board, so I think that was the one board I served on in the past.
Okay.
And I have an engineering background, so, you know, at planning and zoning, they have engineering drawings, so that could be pertinent for a person on the planning and zoning board. And I've been a longtime resident of Mystic. I grew up here and, you know, we're a homeowner and so, so just those things.
No, that's great. It's nice to have new people interested, so thank you. Yes. So in your opinion, what are the responsibilities and primary function of planning and zoning commission?
Well, they review proposals for development, they approve modifications, zoning modifications. You know, I went to the meeting last night where they, what I did is spell affordable housing to them because that's going to impact the zoning regulations. The prior meet, you know, at Smilers, Warf, there's a lot of interest in that development. So the planning and zoning board is going to approve it or disapprove it, and other committees have to approve different parts of the development, you know, the police commission, I guess, for parking and traffic, and the architecture commission for, you know, the outside of the building. So planning and zoning is for planning, zoning regulations, and proposals or modifications to existing lots. You know, if you, for example, you want to build an addition that's closer to your neighbor's yard than the zoning permit allows, you have to go before PNC and ask for an exception.
And I know you've already kind of touched on the engineering experience, but if you wanted to either expand on how you think that experience would be helpful on planning and zoning, or any other kind of specific skill sets that you bring to planning and zoning, and if you don't mind, maybe just to further build on like your your interest in planning and zoning, kind of if there's specific aspects that you touched on that interest you the most.
Okay, well, as you know, people, engineers present drawings to the planning and zoning board, so an engineer could, on the board, review those drawings, look at them. You know, I've been attending planning and zoning meetings since 2001, so I've been to a few of them, and I attended the last two, and, you know, there's a definite interest. I have an interest in planning and zoning because I live in Mystic and I see a lot of change occurring. So, you know, planning and zoning impacts people's lives, as I thought, you know, being a long-term resident of Mystic, and I've been to a number of meetings. I've been to one meeting on the conservation board and one on the water treatment board. But I thought of the three, you know, I was most interested in that board, and that's why I volunteered. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, it's good. Thank you. And then Stephen, do you have any questions for us on the process or planning ability beyond what we've already touched on?
No, I, you mentioned the 2015 Plan for Conservation and Development, so I guess, I've read through that, and I guess that's going to be updated. Is that correct? So does that actually, do they actually, my impression is they don't currently rely on that. It's more of a guidance document, but they make decisions independently of that. Is that your understanding?
I think they try and use it, like you said, as like a guidance document, so obviously there's all the zoning regulations, laws, whether it's, you know, federal, state, or local that they have to follow. But I believe in your argument after planning and zoning, that with every application, the town planner does check off or you kind of go through what matches the strongest of our plan of conservation and development. So if they are doing land conservation as part of the project, you know, that'll get a check, and if it helps increase walkability within town, that'll get another check. So I know they they look at those things. I think they said it's not the number one most driving factor, but it should be a factor. And by 2025, we have to update it, so really by probably 2022, 2023, they'll start working on it.
Yeah. Yeah, it does seem to be dated to me when I read it, so.
And very long, so thanks for... Jeanne, do you have anything else to leave on for the panel?
No, I mean, one of the things that's interesting about planning and zoning, when I first moved here, I, that was the board that was head of vacancy, and the Board of Selectmen at that time asked, well, how about planning and zoning? And I have to say, it's for someone who didn't grow up here, it was the best way to get very familiar with the town very quickly. I was able to go to different places that other people never even walked on because you can walk properties when there's an application. I do know that the zoning laws supersede everything, even if an application isn't quite fit our coastal resiliency plan or the plan of conservation and development, if it fits the laws, it's hard to deny. So we're in a unique situation right now where our zoning regulations are being rewritten. So it's a, you know, members can have input to that, other citizens can have input to that, but it's pretty much all, yeah, about planning and zoning. You can't deny somebody's use of the property if what they want to do is within our regulations, so.
Yeah. Stacy, so you're very welcome to stay for our whole meeting, but it's not always a page turner, so we both take offense.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Any comments from the public? It's been a while. Stay tuned. It's been a while because we haven't had anybody here, so. Okay, I get a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of September 8th, 21st, 2021.
So me?
I second. Motion is second. Any discussion?
No, I think, I think we're good.
Thank you, Stacy. All those are favored.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. So under correspondence, we did receive an application from Robert Hollis, who's interested in serving on the Shellfish Commission, so we will think about correspondence and address that for next meeting, but thank you, Robert, for being interested in the wonderful work of the Shellfish Commission. We've also received an application from Michael Sarah and Francis Pendelte, who are interested in serving on the Climate Change Task Force. We'll talk about that a little bit later in our meeting, but thank you to them for being interested. That's wonderful. Under old business, we have none. I didn't, don't recall our old business, we're done, new business. So under new business, we have finally, after long awaited, the Flood Erosion and Control Board discussion. So this one might feel a bit longer, but essentially, after talking with the town attorney, we have a better understanding of the nature of this board as well as with the new addition that came in this year. So the General Assembly has rescinded the former Flood Erosion Control Board and has added, kind of added in the climate resiliency piece, and it's now called the Flood Prevention, Climate Resiliency, and Erosion Control Board. The town attorney noted that we cannot, for example, which we were maybe hoping for, create a new board and combine the Climate Change Task Force and Stormwater Authority within the new Flood Erosion and Climate Resiliency Control Board. He also noted that we must have a Flood Prevention, Climate Resiliency, and Erosion Control Board and the Stormwater, which we have separately, so the big ones should be seated. So many of these questions obviously came about some of the Climate Change Task Force, and we thought holding a joint meeting with them next month was already useful, but now seems even more pertinent to talk with them. And at that time, we thought we could discuss their thoughts on this, hear from them about what they think to be the best course of action, but I thought we could maybe, I don't want to put you at on the spot, so we could also wait till that meeting or our next meeting. But just to share with you, when we got this information from the town attorney, my thoughts were kind of originally, it would be great to have one board doing all this stuff, but since we can't legally do that, and we know we need the Stormwater Authority to get populated, and then it seems like, and I can tell you more about the Flood Erosion Control Board, my concerns about that board have been used by the town attorney, which I can get into, and then since that board now has climate change authority and more authority than just the task force, I think it might make sense, I think that's what the chair of the Climate Change Task Force was asking for, but I want to be sure the other members will agree and like that plan, but it might actually make sense to, like, always get this word on, dissolve the Climate Change Task Force and then have that kind of work that would spell under that goal to the Flood Erosion and Climate Board and the Stormwater Task Force separately. The only other thing I'll add, so where I think my main concern with this board was, and I think maybe past administration have similar concerns, was, as we know, because the site of our town, the Board of Selectmen has the authority if we don't have the Flood Erosion Control Board. And one of the things that's in their jurisdiction, if you will, is to eminent domain a property if it's deemed a significant like flood risk, and you're trying to say negotiate with the property owner and you make whatever change you have to put in, you know, a bulkhead or a living shoreline or a stormwater drain or whatever we might need to do, and then after a good, safe effort, the property owner won't engage with you, that board then has the power of eminent domain. But where the attorney made me feel better, they said, well, one, the town attorney set us a check and out, but it's obviously they can't, one, they can't offer any money and they can't try and negotiate with anybody without going to the, you know, first segment and, you know, Director of Finance and then the Board of Finance to see what could be even offered. If it gets to an eminent domain situation, they still have to come through the first Selectmen's office, no matter who's here, to have access to the town attorney, and then the town attorney would be the one guiding this decision making. So it seems like even though, it might seem like they have all this kind of power and like this group of appointed people could, you know, start eminent domaining things around town, it does seem like there's quite a lengthy legal process that would still have to be undertaken, and so, yeah, so.
So I have a couple of questions, because I know in a lot of cases, it's the Board of Selectmen that is the Flood Erosion Control Board, and it seems like we still are on a learning curve for how this has changed, and climate resiliency being added to it is not exactly the same as what the Climate Task Force is necessarily doing when it comes to infrastructure and things like that. And I'm wondering if it makes sense, and I'm just thinking, how about to kind of have a little more control of it until we really understand, you know, how it's going to be run, so that if we do create this new task force, and, you know, it could be the same people, you know, with the Climate Task Force, that we really have some tasks and really understand, you know, what needs to be done.
Yep.
You know, because it'll be a lot more than looking at, you know, potential use of electric vehicles or things like that. Really think who's going to pull in the infrastructure plan and how we handle sea level change and drainage and a lot of issues in town. I don't know if that makes sense, but that's just my first thought.
I think on that and the junior event, we didn't see a number of towns, obviously they don't have the newer, but there are a number of towns that have them seated, so we could reach out to those towns to ask and see how they feel, they're doing, what their purview is, how they've been working, so we could get that information from, I'm trying to stop my head from moving, but other kind of stuff.
Yes, you don't want to reinvent the wheel. If somebody's doing it successfully and can offer kind of a structure.
Yeah, and then to be sure that it is enough overlap or that there is bandwidth for that group to take on some of the other climate kind of initiatives that were happening.
So I know in our packets, we got the comments from the town attorney with respect to the Erosion Control Board and some of the questions that the Climate Change Task Force put forward.
Yeah.
But what are you, what are you reading from with respect to, so I don't know about this climate resiliency board?
So the new, the state law, I think it was in this packet somewhere, but this year, they amended.
Yeah, that was July 1. This new, this new thing came out. So is he saying, is he saying that the Erosion Control Board, which was formed in 1961 here, no longer is valid?
That's what we're...
He wrote back. He said it's still valid.
Oh, it is still valid.
It just has a new hat, is basically how he explained it.
Oh, okay. So it's still valid, but now it also has climate resiliency.
It just has the climate, so, yep, so we don't have to change our ordinance or anything like that. We just, it just becomes this new.
They took the exact same thing and they just added a layer of giving this board the purview, very typically looking at town everybody, and so I think you, I mean, you follow that.
Yeah, which makes sense, and it really has a lot to do with the sea level lines and how that impacts your drainage and your infrastructure.
So with respect to the task force, I mean, I think the task force still is, serves a purpose. Like at the last meeting, so some of the things that, like to be specific about what we've asked them to do, I'll let everybody know, October 1 is the deadline for your SIP requests, and that the line items for SIP need to come from the task force. It's not useful to send something to the Board of Selectmen in January or February before the public hearing that, oh, by the way, this should really be in SIP. So they're going to be meeting, and then also some other budgetary items for, you know, general operating, general operating budget, if there's something that's really critical, and they did come up with a list of things that the top 10 items that they thought were critical for Stonington, so they put together budget requests so that it's coming from the task force, it's coming from a place of knowledge and doing it in a timely fashion. So they're meeting next Thursday, nothing like last minute, September 30, right, to do the budget. But then I also said that something else that was very important was the zoning regulations. So I think that's something where there's a, there's a couple of volunteers that, in the task force, that would love to absolutely be involved in the rerun of the zoning regulations starting now.
That's fabulous.
And, and look at, so I think that there's, even if we, if we have this board that's populated and they have the ability for eminent domain for, you know, a house that's falling down into the water or something, like, no, you can't build it again.
Yeah. But I think what would be good is maybe between this meeting and the climate change meeting or our next meeting, not the 30th, but the joint one, is to really read through the Public Acts, 21-115, I don't know what it is, but basically read through that, really understand, like, and I need to do more of this too, but really understand what their purview is and what areas, if any, feel like would be missing that, say, the Climate Change Task Force could take on. Because again, at my, and I need to do a deeper dive, but at my first review of it, it felt like you likely could, since climate resiliency was added in there, all the things they're doing, you talked about that they're doing, which is great. I think this potentially new Flood Erosion, Climate Resiliency Board could be doing.
Could be doing.
So it would just be combining, and I think, just thinking of it from a, you know, staffing logistics, how many meetings to attend, like, the more we can condense and combine is good. But again, if we read through the state statute and it's like, yeah, this is pretty specific, and it's really just the infrastructure piece, and then if you want to do engagement and education and zoning outside of flood, you know, other energy, like renewable energy at town hall, or things like that, and it wouldn't necessarily fall under this, then then we'd maybe make the case for having all, you know, all three of them, including the Stormwater Task Force. But yeah, I think if we could look through that, and if you want, as a kind of change plan, and once you look through that, even thinking to some individual members of that board or task force, or, you know, write up your own type of bullet point, I think that would be good.
Yeah.
Because I think we're not opposed to keeping them.
No, no.
If it's useful, but if it could be combined in a useful way, I think that would be good.
The third request was to, you know, there's, there's so many grants, but which ones, which ones fit the top 10 priorities? Like, which ones are the most important ones? And I, I asked, I asked them for help with that, like, to go through the grants and tell us which ones are worthy of applying for, like, for this particular job or for that particular project, you know, that, and they, you know, they have a list of the things that they think are the most important, which are the same, you know, items that we think are the most important, that come up with the Department of Public Works, you know, as far as, as far as infrastructure projects, so.
No. So there may be a way to, you know, combine them because they're already doing it. If not, if they have other interests, there may be a way to have the three different ones. I mean, I agree with you. I think we need to look at it, because we have people who, you know, doing a good job and are interested, and certainly, you know, with their interest, could it staying on and continuing?
Yeah. Yeah, because I forget the exact number, but one of the boards is very specific that seven members and the other one is nine or five or something, but five.
Five for the erosion one, I think.
Yeah, there, that was another reason, we couldn't combine them, like, the statutes are very specific with the number of people you can allow on there, so.
Can I say something too? Like, the other thing that the town attorney had said in that packet too was if you, if the Climate Change Task Force stays doing what they've been doing, you have to, you guys have to be very specific about what tasks you're providing them and that they don't ever overlap with whatever the Erosion Control Board is doing or the Stormwater is doing, like, it has to be, they, they all can't be working on the same things.
Yeah, they have to be very, like, just as an example, like, maybe we say to Climate Change Task Force, you're really only tasked with, you know, like, education, outreach, and engagement of information that other boards are giving you plus do, things you need to do, or you're only looking at kind of proactive climate mitigation members, measures dealing with like how the town could be more proactive on some of these things, not the adaptation or resiliency measures, like, I think there's ways to do it, but again, I need to read more about, you know, the new statute, and if you guys look through it too and just think about, yeah, does it make sense to combine or separate, and then we can share our own insights with the Climate Change Task Force. So it'll be interesting to see, like, what the members there feel.
Yeah, because we don't want it to have this overwhelming list of tasks. I mean, it may make sense to split them only because there are things that are doing, like, some of the future, the work and the electric vehicles and things like that, that they might not have time to do if they were doing the other ones.
Yeah.
I don't know that.
Yeah. It'd be good to get their input.
Okay.
And when you talk more about it, can I?
Okay, because I, because, yeah, because I need, did you, did you include the statute in our packets?
They reference the number, but we can email them.
You can get it from the, I'm probably going to.
I can email it to you. It was like 38 or 9 or 40 pages long, something like that, so.
Okay, all right. Is it in English or is it in legal?
It's in legal.
Legal, yeah. I'm totally in legal, it's, yeah, all right. But I've been to a couple of webinars, and I might have a PowerPoint.
Oh, yeah.
Explaining it. Explaining it, so let me write myself down, because then I can send you that.
All right. Human language?
Yeah, exactly.
Because, because in my, in my thoughts, it's not just, and maybe this is more the outreach, it's not just, you know, adapting to a rise in high tide levels or sea level or anything like that, or more rain than normal, it's not just that. It's like, how is everybody living their lives? What are you doing with that piece of plastic that came in the sandwich that you bought from the store today? Or like, what, your thought process, what do you think about the next time you go buy a car? I mean, so there's a lot, I mean, there's a lot.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm concerned about, the overwhelming one.
Like, maybe then a Climate Change Task Force could focus more on that kind of sustainability, sustainable lifestyle.
Yes.
Could you maybe think about also, yeah, like, could we do an event that's not just about, you know, your home heating and windows, but also your, your lifestyle, sort of, your move, what you're putting in your garden, like, how much soil can absorb carbon capture, tree, you know, all these things that we can be doing as a community more so.
Yeah. There's this, so this plastic bracelet, this is plastic that was harvested from the ocean, from the islands of the, of plastic in the ocean, and while I am, have been very conscientious about every little piece of paper and every little thing, it's a constant reminder that it's from the ocean, right? So, so, I mean, those are the kinds of things that I think that I don't, if you have to report.
More education, more like materials, and maybe if they're willing to, yeah, no, I'm up for keeping and reading more if you can get with them and they feel comfortable that they can do that on.
Okay, yeah.
All right, so we'll think more about it.
All right.
Sorry, Jen. So in a word for, a bid for unleaded gasoline.
Speaking of.
Okay, how do I say no?
And then supply gasoline for our fuel guzzling fleet of vehicles. We submitted that, we actually, two years ago, Board of Ed generally does this, they send out bids for their home, the heating oil, diesel fuel, and then gasoline for the cars and smaller trucks. So two years ago, when they did one, we actually did it, a two-year bid, so we only received two bids, one was from Dime Oil Company and another one was from East River. I think the, one of the other one, both for 2021, I think one of the contracts were given to each of those two vendors, and then the diesel contract was given to, diesel and home heating oil was given to Dime for 2122, but they didn't execute a contract for the gasoline for 2122 because they thought it was too expensive. I was surprised, so, you know, when the first bill came in, it came across my desk, I saw the price on it, I said, there's got to be some mistake, they don't realize we got a, we're locked in at $1.61, and it came across my, my desk at, I don't know, $2.87 or $2.67, whatever it was. So I quickly put together... So I quickly put together a bid, and we had a bid just for the gasoline portion for the, for the town. And now only one person did, only one firm did on this, and that was East River again, and their bid came in at
Two dollars.
Two dollars thirty, thirty point four or five cents, with an estimated volume of thirty-nine thousand gallons for a total of, a total contract of eighty-nine thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars fifty cents. You know, what's this going to do? A month, a day, a week, a month, you know, six months now, I don't know, but I'm not comfortable leaving things up in the air like that, so I wanted to get something like it. You know, I think we'll probably use more than thirty-nine thousand. I had to estimate what they've already used for the first two and a half months of this fiscal year, take it off what they normally order, and I think it was pretty low too, just because we don't know how, what's going to happen, and how much activity we're going to have. Again, like, you know, we did COVID, things slowed down, we might not even use that, so. That was my thing there. So I would just recommend that we get that thirty-nine thousand gallon locked in at the, at the bid price.
That's a question, yeah. Do we, so if we don't use thirty-nine thousand gallons, do we have to pay for thirty-nine thousand gallons?
We do.
We do?
That's another reason why I estimated on the lower, lower end.
Okay.
Because when COVID did hit, we had, I don't know how many gallons overall we contracted for, but I knew, whatever we paid for it, we sold it back for pennies on the dollar, so.
So, can I, so this is not in combination with the board yet?
It is not.
Would we, I mean, I'm not saying we should do this right now, but would we save money in the future by combining with them, or is it pretty much?
I think, I don't think so. I mean, I think thirty-nine thousand gallons is enough to, somebody's going to bid on it. If the town, if the Board of Ed said they're doing thirty-nine thousand, maybe they, they could refine it, but it's a commodity, you know, the prices are what they are. They got their markup, and if that much more quantity, maybe they might nip around the edges, but I don't think it would make a significant difference.
So are they entering into their own contract, do you know?
That's what they normally would do.
Normally, it's together.
No, normally it's done together.
Together. Oh, you mean the Board of Ed, with the town?
Yeah.
The Board of Ed normally contracts for the town and the Board of Ed together.
That's like a general call card, they didn't do it.
They didn't do it for the town side?
They didn't do it for the south. They didn't lock in for the second, it was two-year bid, and they, they thought the price was too high for, in the year two, so they didn't, they didn't lock that in.
And that was even higher?
Too much higher.
But thank you, Jennifer, no doubt in that. Can I get a motion to award this on let it gas into East River Energy for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, in the amount eighty-nine thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars and fifty cents?
So.
A second.
Motion taken. Any further discussion or questions?
Are you going to let the Board of Ed know that they're doing this?
They know.
Okay.
Gary, actually, Gary did call me, ask me if I would send my bid documents, I think he's going to do his own thing now.
Okay. Any further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carried. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Welcome to stay, but you can also hit the road.
Well, I'll stay around, hear about how much discussion you're going to have about the brownfield grant application, or if it's just a.
It's just a, it's just a motion to, for that.
All right, well, then I'll move along.
Move along. Thank you. Last week was a really nice. Okay, so we have a resolution speaking more about flood prevention. This is one of those, it sounds too good to be true, but I think it actually is just really good. So this is about the Pocatuck River watershed protections and flooding prevention program. So basically, they reached out to, to ask Westerly and Dunne and a few other towns, and had a call, we had a couple of calls, and so now we're at the stage where we think we should take this forward, the lead to adopt, to get started in the process, but just a little background is the watershed protection and flood prevention program helps units of federal, state, and local and tribal government, or what they call the project sponsors, protect and restore watersheds up to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand acres. Other benefits and goals may be achieved through the plan, but the primary objective is flood control to improve the watershed function. So for our case, we're talking about everything along the Pocatuck River in that watershed. The goal of the program is not just to study, which is interesting, because a couple of years ago, we already did the Pocatuck River, would River, Pocatuck Association did a study, but basically what they said to us is in order to then take that study and develop and get funding, to see, for actual solutions for flood protection, they need to do it through this federal program's way of doing it. And so we know that they'll physically work on the landscape for which they're planning. So the intent is to plan the future construction. So the planning is three phases, planning, design, construction, and we would be entering the first phase of planning. Towns must be a sponsor in the planning phase to be eligible to participate in and receive funding for the design and construction phase. Participating in the planning phase does not obligate the municipality to further participate in the project if they feel the alternative select, selected kind of options don't meet our, our goals or our needs, but we have the option. And then during the planning phase, the only obligation is that the town gives time for monthly meetings, and then additional, of the three, kind of communities to hold our engagement, kind of public meetings. And so with that, could I get a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the first selectmen to proceed on behalf of the town as a sponsor in the Wood-Pocatuck Watershed Plan?
So, a second.
Right. So with all that, now, questions, discussion, thoughts?
This is really exciting, actually, and it isn't a cost. I'm reading it, there's no cost to us.
I keep being like, are you sure?
Yeah. I mean, that's what I read it saying, how much is a cost? I mean, it's a time commitment.
It's a time commitment, so we'll need, so Keith, as town planner, and then Chris, as town engineer, will need to get pulled into this a bit. Then the EDC and Climate Change Task Force have already said they would each give a member to help join these meetings, because we said, you know, it's not a given, but things like the circus block, you know, could be potential, like, improvements along the watershed there, that could help meet some of our recreational goals there, but also
Yeah, stream bridge and things like that.
Blood protection, you know, like exit routes, yes, Stillman definitely. They said, you know, parks and kind of recreation things can be part of it, but they also look at more of the hedge space and, and, you know, improvement along that way, and bulkheads and living shorelines, and, you know, so it seems like, it seems like a win.
A win-win.
Yeah. You don't get many of those. But any other questions or discussion?
No.
No.
And we can say, like, once we start the meeting, like, you wanted to be more of the town rep and join the monthly calls versus me, like, doesn't have to be me, it could be one of us, or we could alter me and kind of feed in, obviously you have, you have experience with some of these topics, so, so, yeah, we can decide who joined that, but I think we just need somebody there. Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Okay, I feel we're on an environmental spree tonight, this is good. The next one is a resolution on the brownfield grant application for the former Stillmanville No site. So this resolution authorizes the first selectmen to execute and file the brownfield grant application with Connecticut deep in regards to the Stillmanville No assessment. Could I get a motion to approve the resolution?
So.
Please second.
A second.
Motion taken. Any discussion?
No, this is a step in the process, an important one, and I was in my comments, I have a couple of other comments, I'm still.
Okay.
So, so is this part of the grant that we got?
Yeah. No, it's basically get the money.
No, I have to do this to get the money.
And then we'll get one for the boat house, because I think our boat house won soon, but that's just not final.
Okay. And is it, was it for a hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars, or it wasn't for more than that?
No.
No?
It's just the assessment.
Okay.
This is just to complete the investigation, so we know what's on that site.
I think we could apply for up to two hundred thousand, but based on like that there's already some work done, right, you had estimated that, we obviously want to be honest and competitive.
And this, and this allows us, just again, this allows us to get onto the site?
Yes.
And to get onto the site and to retain a consultant. Just.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay, the next one is to set the call. So the next item is to set the call for a special town meeting to be held on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, to consider and vote on the American Rescue Plan Fund. We have hereby resolved that pursuant to section three dash three of the charter, the Board of Selectmen called the special town meeting from Monday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, at seven PM, at Stonington High School, one seventy-six South Broad Street, Pocatuck, Connecticut, to consider and act upon resolutions as outlined in the notice of the special town meeting, which will be attached to the minutes of this meeting as appendix A, which notice is hereby approved. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution to set the call for a special town meeting on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one?
So.
Your second.
My second.
Motion taken. Any discussion?
No. I just, I just want, I mean, I just, I, you know, all right, so. The application that we recommended, some of them stayed, some of them went away, there was a million dollars in the contingency. I just want to make it very, very clear that any additional funds required for any other things that were approved, or any other things that may come up, all requests need to come to us first. Everything needs to go through the Board of Selectmen, and then we go to, in front of the Board of Finance to reallocate the contingency funds to that particular line item. I'm thinking, you know, specifically HVAC for town hall, the HVAC for Department of Human Services, so some of the other line items that did get some funding, they need probably greater than what it was funded, so, so those types of things to come here first.
I think that's fair. We're kind of making this process up as we go along, and I think normally a grant would just come to the Board of Selectmen, so I think it's a fair thing to say, and again, trying to be transparent and have your checks and balances in government, that will be the first step, and then once it gets passed up, go to the Board of Finance and kind of a partnership. I think that's fair. So we can make that clear.
Make that very clear. Like, in first, I know there was the request plucked up Little League, but they need different permits for that request, and so we could have directed them, like, get the permits first, and then come back and ask, so, because there's no, no sense in allocating funds for something that may not even be permitted.
Yeah, kind of come through, we'll help guide the process.
And we've done a lot of research and looked into it, so it wasn't like we just made the numbers up, so we've already kind of spent a lot of time.
Yes, yes.
All right, that's good. And then hopefully, yeah, people understand that we, we'll try and make it clear through conversations, but recently, we talked to people and have ideas how to make it clear that, again, this was something that we could have just approved, the Board of Finance could have just approved, but we wanted to send it to a town meeting to get residents to kind of do approval of how we're spending the five million, so hopefully people do come out and engage in the process, and, and vote, and also understand, you know, that public hearing, the Board of Finance kind of public hearing already happened, so they can't come in and say, I support everything, so this one line, take that out, that step is our agenda. So hopefully, we can help them, be sure people know this is kind of an all-in, all-out, yes, no, vote, and comment, and do what you want, so.
Well, I think it would be good to help explain, because, you know, you have a lot of people who will say, hey, well, why couldn't we split this up and everybody get a tax rebate? And truly explain, no, there were very specific requirements for how the law is going to do that.
Exactly.
It's a very unique pool of money. I mean, it's not our, it's not the town's tax revenues, it's, you know, it's just a very, very unique pool of money, and it has to be spent a specific way.
Exactly. All right, so we'll try and maybe open the meeting with some good educational materials. Okay, so that's it. So, okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carried. Right, final one, comments from the selectmen. Dex, is it?
Okay, I just have a couple of things. One, I felt we had really productive, successful meeting on Monday, meeting with WPCA, and understanding, you know, going forward, a lot of concerns and issues, and while there's still obviously a lot of questions that need to be answered, at least we're getting a better understanding of where things are headed, and what force case costs of, maybe, might be. But tied into that, I realized, and I'm excited that they added those properties that have been on the waiting list to be able to get their sewer district up to the fifty, what was it?
Fifty thousand gallons a day.
Fifty thousand gallons a day. I'm excited that they added those and have moved that along, but one of those properties, it ties into my second comment, is adjacent to the Mystic Brook Boat House Park. And that property now can start moving ahead with their demolition and construction of the hotel on the Seaport property. And I don't know if you recall, but there's an easement on that property, that's on the, for them to use a property, which is, an old exists, I looked at, it goes back to the sixties, in that time, but I think we really have to now engage them and have an understanding of what they intend to use easement for, because I did see that one plan that puts their main driveway going through the park, and that's something that we certainly haven't approved or discussed, or, or even looked at possible safety implications with kids and the public, or how that might impact the remediation that needs to be done on the Boat House Park. I know that letter did go out to some of the boards saying they shouldn't issue permits without coming back to the selectmen to understand that, but, you know, I'm kind of concerned because that actually went through when it was on, so just, I just wanted to highlight that, because I think that's something we really, you know, we've kind of been waiting, and said, you know, let's wait until we see what happens, but now it could happen, it could move ahead, and I think we need to kind of understand that.
Can put the, and we've been thinking about this, but to start, just asking the Seaport and the hotel developer just to come into town hall for like an informal meeting with me, and maybe, should we also bring in at this point a member of the police or police commissioners, and they'll have to go through that, or just start smaller? Do you want them to come to the Board of Selectmen to talk?
I mean, they probably could just meet the view in town hall, but I think we really need to understand, I mean, if indeed they're looking at putting their main driveway through the park, it has to be coordinated with the plan for the park. I mean, we haven't, something that hasn't been looked at really by the town with the park design. I know a couple of consultants have looked at it, but, you know, I, it's hard to imagine how that's going to integrate with the park. And maybe that's, and we need to really understand, I read the easement, and it says, like, for all uses.
Because I'm trying to say it's the broadest easement they've ever kind of seen, and it does really seem to permit them to use it in any way they want.
But I'm wondering, does it have to be the entire easement? Perhaps, you know, if we end up with, it'll be a cap for the remediation. Could they have an entrance kind of behind our parking lot? I mean, there may be.
So, or like, a, yeah.
Exactly. And if you don't know the answer to these questions, I just, I'm concerned that they start to get ahead in their process without considering this, and it really could impact park remediation or curb use and parking. I mean, if we're losing eight, ten, fifteen parking spaces because their driveway's going there, I think we really need to understand how that's going to impact the park, so. But I think, you know, you could start with a small meeting. I don't know that they necessarily have to give a presentation to the Board of Selectmen, but, I don't know.
It's a good reminder to reach out, we've dealt, that, you know, we're very happy that we've looked at, and we'd like to know your current schedule, and we also have our brownfield grants, great timing. But we need to be sure we're like in lockstep with both the, any potential construction, because it's on the brownfield, like, for our portion, and then also just to, to be sure before they, because they haven't gone through the police commission, right?
Gone through, but it was contingent on. So it was contingent on the police commission determining how to police cars that are parking overnight, that are violating the.
On our site or on the hotel site?
They're, they're using our site.
Yeah.
For parking. So they're going to use.
I think it'll legally fare, because they're letting us use, it's like the legal.
No, it's our, our property that we're letting them use, but, but.
That's a part of the easement.
It's part of the.
I actually have a picture of it.
I did. I think it, I think they're some approaching, but, so, and I, the one thing that I've had a problem with this ever since it got approved was the Planning and Zoning Commission, I feel, has really given incorrect information to their questions. They were told that all of this was worked out with the Boat House Park.
Yeah.
Planning and zoning was told that this was worked out, and it's not.
It's not.
So they made, so they voted on incorrect information, that the remediation was all worked out, that the parking was all worked out, that the whole park's design was all worked out.
So, yeah, so we can, I mean, again, like, we need to be a good neighbor to them, and obviously follow the easement, but hopefully you, we've never met. to them, and obviously, all the easements, but hopefully, you, we've never met with them, so hopefully, we could, um, just have a, an introductory meeting about the, the timing and everything, and then just talk about, you know, we just want to be sure it's, it's safe for, you know, people using the park, as well as, you know, conducive for their flow of traffic, and just to sit down and, and talk, but, so, the police commission itself, do they have to go back to the, the hotel?
I believe, I, I believe they, they do.
Right.
But we should check on that, because it's one of those little things that can fall through the crack and just get a blanket approval without the full, and I, and I, I don't believe that the chief would let that happen, but, you know, it's, it's worth checking. I just want, I really want it to be brought up to the top, instead of something that's.
Yeah, and I, I struggle with how you can have a main driveway through your, even with an easement, your neighborhood park, property, without engaging with the neighbor to understand the implications. I mean, again, I want to be a good neighbor as well, um, and, you know, and that's one reason I'm saying maybe it could start with a small meeting, rather than maybe dragging consultants to do a presentation, which is a costly.
Yeah. Okay, no, let's talk through, I'll, we'll reach out to them, the, 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 their, their ability, I know that last time we talked, it was the Seaport, they said, it wasn't so much a sewer as just a process of construction, that they were waiting until next spring to start.
Okay.
So we can see if anything, you changed their, their timeline, but it's a good, it's, you know, September, it's a good time to kind of reach out and set up a meeting.
Yeah, and, uh, before we get going with remediation, because it will impact.
Them.
Their condition, as well as their.
Okay.
Um, and then my final comment was just briefly on Stillman, to say, it's exciting that it's, um, moving along. I did, you know, I spoke with Susan, and I did reach out to Alto, who's a consultant that previously worked on the site, and they were very interested, if you recall, in that with us.
Yeah, they came with us, yeah.
They're very interested in doing the work. Um, now, the state has this D A S list, which is a list of pre-approved consultants, which, for the Mystic River Park, which is a really significant amount of money, we are certainly going to look at consultants on that list. Um, now, for Stillman, the previous consultant, they've done all the previous work, all the way up through the media action plan, they own that data, they've got boxes and files of that data, and they're very well-respected, I mean, they might, I don't know, but they're a very well-respected.
Are they on the list, or not?
They are not on the list, because they're a smaller company, so what Susan suggested, and I will do this, is that I tried to give the call, D E C D indicated that they might be willing to approve them.
Because we've already worked with them.
Because we've already worked with them, and so, they've worked on, and I sent this information to Susan, they have worked on multiple high-profile ground fields, uh, sites in the state, so it isn't like they're a startup firm that hasn't really done anything, and they're very familiar too, and, so they're called Alto.
They, they, you know, we had a joint meeting in the big mess, you know, the day, like, years ago.
And they went out to the site already, and they put together a preliminary proposal, um, which I'm going to actually speak with them tomorrow, before I have them, you know, update to a proposal, we want to make sure that there isn't going to be an issue with the E C D, so.
Will you reach out to Don Friday?
Yeah, Susan has me to reach out, I just didn't have a chance to today, but, um, I'll call him and just understand what, you know, what would happen there, and I know they're familiar with them.
Okay, good. And if he says, like, yeah, it sounds, okay, if you just get him to send it in an email, so we have it in writing, or Dr. Don, um, because, yeah, I think our, there was some confusion between the two projects.
Yes.
And so we just wanted to be sure that they, they did include, and we think that it'd be fine to go through, we'd already used, but it was more for the boathouse, because they'd already, we'd already used, have, like, state money, but then, it seemed like this on two, they might, but it would just to get confirmation and get it in writing.
And I think with the boathouse, Susan and I talked, it, it's quite a bit of money. Um, I think it makes sense to possibly open it up to other firms and do an R F P, and, um, look at maybe several on that list, including the ones that worked there, um, because there's always also been a concern that the ones that cur, that previously worked there are working for the Seaport and that hotel, and it seems like a very likely conflict that they.
That was a source of misinformation.
Seventeen, there's seventeen, I think we, that are on the list that we can go through, or there's eighteen that you're, so we're going to take them off, yes.
Eighteen of them, yeah.
But were you saying, in addition to the seventeen, to also do, like, a more formal R F P and do a whole bid process, or just go with the seventeen on there and interview them, and, or put out a more informal R F P to the seventeen that are already approved?
Yeah.
Okay, but not the, but not, like, um, ones that aren't approved?
Yeah, to just, I mean, if we need to, if one of it's approved, it doesn't make sense in that case to reach out to ones that aren't approved, because the ones that previously worked are far on that list.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I think the understanding of, and it'd be good to clarify, we'll go back to the notes too, but I think we don't have to use those that are on there, but we have to then do a formal bid process, which could add months to it, and then they can still, they noted them, but, um, but it'd be good, we can get clarity on that. But, yeah, I think the seventeen is, is, yeah.
I think so too.
And most of our, can I ask a question about the boat?
Yeah.
Um, so, I just want to be sure I have this correct, so you're going to work with Susan on, um, the kind of order magnitude of, like, all the different tasks you think we need to do to get to opening up of the park, and kind of have it in the, the different segments, or write it up as, maybe, like, here's the main scope of work, and here's all the additional things, so somebody could say, yes, I can take all twenty-one items and do them in-house, or I can do, you know, these ones, but these ones I can't do, so we know we have to pull them out and do, like, another, look for another firm who can do those pieces?
Yes, and as a first step, what I did was I took the budget, and I separated it into kind of, like, construction, meaning the town, bonding funds, and remediation, which would be the grant. So I sent her, you know, how I saw the two separated.
Okay.
Um, you know, benches, and things that we're actually constructing, especially things that E D W can do, are kind of on the town side, whereas, you know, the demolition, the fill, the lawn, and the renovation is all on the remediation side.
Okay.
So that I did so far, and I'm working on, my initial thought was I would try to do, like, a flow chart, um, so you can kind of see where everything falls, and I think that will help.
Yeah, it'll help them.
Yeah.
In this kind of informal R F P, if we're ever, when we're trying to get bids or estimates back, if we buy firms right back, and we know there's still a bucket with our own estimates, that say, like, oh, four hundred thousand dollars over here, but then these come in, like, well over budget, then it'll just give us a better sense of what we can afford or not.
Exactly.
Hopefully, they don't, hopefully, they're in the right budget area.
Well, the, the other thing is, they're all very large firms on that group list, um, whereas, like, Alto's a, is not a large firm, I mean, they've got twenty people, but they're not, you know, six hundred people, so that's another option, is that we do, there are a lot of very good firms in the state that are not on that list.
Okay, so if they come into, like, we go back to D E C D, and say, like, they all kind of way above the budget.
Yeah.
Could we, so get some of these other firms, like, it's on the other side, it's a larger one, they might do, do a lot of it in-house, instead of having to do a separate contract.
Exactly, which is one, it makes sense to start with.
Okay. Okay. Mary's taken.
Oh, so, yes, um, so I have a couple of things, um, and it has to do with the climate change task force. So we had a very spirited meeting, um, last week, very passionate, I mean, the, the members are very passionate, and it's fantastic, so, and I think what I said earlier about some of the things to, um, have them be, you know, to give them tasks, and this is some of the things that I talked about, um, with them the last couple of meetings, and one was the budget, right, so the SIP requests, um, because the task force has requested items in SIP, um, but to really fill out the document, to, to attach the justification, all of the, all of the information that's really required in a, in, in, um, a SIP request, and then also, so general operating budget request, so that's what they're working on right now, they're going to come to a consensus and a vote, when the entire task force votes on it, um, next week. Um, there was some comment that, you know, the chair could do all that, I said, no, I really, the, the entire task force really needs to vote on these things and do that, so that's, so that's what they're going to do. Um, I did talk about the zoning regulations, um, and how we are in a unique, you know, situation right now, with their being, with them being rewritten. We have a three-hundred-plus-page coastal resiliency plan that was published, you know, four years ago or so, and there are numerous recommendations in there on how to change our regulations, and how coastal buildings should be changed, so, um, there is a member of the task force that is very, very interested in volunteering for that. Um, Julia Perry is very, very interested in, in, um, in vol, in volunteering for that. She's actually even reached out to a couple of, um, neighboring towns to see what they've done, especially the towns that have recently updated their, um, yeah, well, that's, I mean, that's, that's what's important, like, so we don't need to rewrite something, and see what other towns have done and adapt it for us, so, um, but I'd like to engage her in, in doing that, so.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Um, and then the, the third thing was the grant opportunities, I know we all get bombarded with emails about grants for this and grants for that, and, um, so I've said, well, you know, you've got this list, and I, I, I think, I don't know if this list was ever, um, attached to our minutes, but I would like to include it, but, and this is something that's had great discussion at the task force, um, so we asked them, um, maybe it was October of last year, to go through, prioritize what they thought was the most important things that we needed to tackle. So they looked at the Plan of Conservation and Development, they looked at the Coastal Resiliency Plan, they looked at, um, our zoning regulations, and they looked at some of our infrastructure projects that are in our SIP budget, um, and they did come up with the top ten, you know, so, um, um, so, and, you know, some of them we talked about here tonight, well, one is, you know, for a new position, um, for, um, an engineer is a tough one, but activate the flood prevention, climate resilience and erosion control board, um, implement a climate emergency declaration, which was done through COG, I mean, they started that, so a lot of these things are already being done, rewrite zoning regulations was, um, like, number four, and this was something that was, um, that, you know, that I think helped with that being passed, and passed by this, so, a lot of the things that they think are important are actually being looked at, it's like, it's, it's not that different from what is, what's already going to SIP, what the Department of Public Works has said is really important, that we need to take a look at, so, um, but I have this, and I, you know, so we can just attach it, um, to, um, to our minutes tonight. Um, so I think, so that, yeah, so the thing, the thing was the grants, so to, to take a look at the grants, and which grants, like, helped these things, like, which grants, and I know we need some matching funds, we do have some line item funds that are, and, you know, attributed to the task force, but if there's a compelling grant, and we can get money, and we need a match that's greater than what we've got, we can, we can ask for it, so, I mean, that's how we got our police radio, that's how the Dean's Mill, um, roof was built, I mean, there's, you know, we have a rainy day fund for things that are really important that kind of flowed to the top, um, so, those are the things that I had asked them to do, so, um, and I'm, I'm excited about our joint meeting, with their, that, I think there's the, the talk of.
And if you want to make it really proactive, so beyond, um, you, the great work you've already done, and what we talked about today, I think there's other things that you think about, that while we're all together, that we want to ask them, or get their insights on, or, things you said about, what, what are specific tasks for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, that they, you, they want to work on, and keep on, um, thinking about?
Yeah, and they also said that, you know, and so, one of the, um, comments, um, at the last meeting was, you know, you could, you could get bogged down in this overwhelming sense of, where do I start, what do I do, I, you know, one person can't make a difference, so they really focus on one or two items is what they're going, is what they're going to do.
That's great.
So, so the last thing that, um, I'll, I'll add to that, um, was, um, and I, and I don't want to specifically mirror what the town of Brighton has done, but the town of Brighton have come up with a, um, it's a resolution of commitment to address climate change, resiliency, and sustainability as essential, this is what it's called, as essential management principle for all actions of town government, and that title was great, some of the content for their resolution, I think, um, a little bit of overreach, I would like to come up with something, and, and I think it's just a reminder to everybody, you don't all have to wear a plastic harvested from the ocean to, like, think about what you do in your everyday life, but all the departments of, like, just to be reminded, like, this is, we, like, if you haven't already changed your thought process and the thing that you do, do you have to print that next document, you know, can you look at it online, are we recycling everything, are we doing everything that we can, are we, you know, I know that the, um, our solid race department is just phenomenal, and I would like to have more of what we do there absolutely published, the fact that we made it to, like, the National Composting Magazine, as, like, a model town, I don't think a lot of people know that, but I think that's fantastic, so, um, so anyway, I, I, I'm willing to work, I'm willing to work on that, but just as, just so, like, as to be constantly reminded that everything that we each do every day makes a difference, so.
That's very good, Jerry, I love that. Look at, um, Sustainable C T.
Okay.
For, because they, they break out all these different areas of sustainability, um, a focus on what a municipality can do, and, um, so it just might give you, you have insights on wording, or.
Okay.
Yes, because it, they range it from everything from, like, you know, affordable housing to greener living, to, because you might want to narrow down, but it is interesting, because we said it's a way, it's been a great tool for engaging other departments, saying, hey, you feel even really, you're part of this puzzle, like, you know, your practices really matter here.
Right.
Um, so it's going to be.
And some of the things that they're already doing, it may have been, like, you know, changing out the lights, so the biggest thing for changing out the lights was to save money, right? And it saves a lot in our utility bills. It also saves a lot of electricity, you know, we're not consuming as, as much electricity, so it had us, you know, perhaps it wasn't the primary focus, because we, you know, this is, you know, this is taxpayers' money, that, you know, we're, we're responsible for, um, but while, and looking at that, I'm, to save on our utility bill, we're also consuming less electricity, which then means less coal needs to be burned, or less, you know, natural gas needs to be used, so, um, so it's, so, so, it's just those types of things, I bet, so Sustainable C T.
C T, yeah, so we have, like, a Stilley and, um, dashboard, but even just, like, you can click on anything, it's interesting, because it gives you examples of what some other towns have done, and, um, the categories, even just the wording categories are helpful.
Okay.
And that's, I think, though.
June, I love that, and I like it, it, to me, like, having the commitment as opposed to the emergency, it, it's really, it's a good, positive, moving forward steps, and we can, you know, look at this in all our different departments, as opposed to an emergency, which really just, to me, has more negative connotations, this is.
If you can, hope.
You can do it, there's hope, this is a good thing.
Well, yeah, and, and everybody, 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 one person can make a difference.
One person can make a difference.
What's that?
One person can make a difference.
One person can make a difference.
And again, like, something the chairs all, the first plus board and commission chairs, they love, every application they see, and when they're talking to people, and, you know, there's probably aspects that they could do fun.
Yes.
How many of you? How many of you?
Okay, all right, good.
Is that it?
Yeah, that was, that was it, that's all I had.
I'll try to be quick, so just as a reminder, we're really excited that, um, we were able to largely connect to the STEMA Core, um, who've done COVID testing press before, but they're back every Thursday at Human Services, so last week was our first one, um, the twenty-plus people came, but it was kind of a soft launch, hopefully more people come, we've heard from people, you across, not just our community, across the region, that it's been hard to get easy access to testing, and especially if you don't have insurance, or, um, just you, it's just a challenge, you can find a place, um, so it's from four P M. to seven P M. drive-through, you can also walk up, um, and it's, um, going to be every, every Thursday for the, you know, near future, hopefully as long as people use that, so that's a, that's a positive, um, the, and again, just, you don't have to remind the little, that's, and, um, you can, you're just a get a check, you know, just if you have that.
Have you shared the rules, because I know there's certainly, they actually have kids.
I'll remind them, I shared it actually today, but I feel like, I was, I shared the flyer and stuff, and I don't know if they noticed it, so it'd be more specific to say, to be sure everybody knows, um, the, I don't know if you saw it, but our nine-on-one, two-on-one bill ward went up, on, I think it's on Route Two, um, but, um, so we're really excited, so if you drive by, or I can send a picture, I just came in this afternoon, the picture of it, um, but it looks great, so it, um, and then we're going to have a meeting with United Way, the P D, myself, and mine, the creative, to talk about some of the other work, like, um, direct mailer to people's homes, um, the P D was up, they're kind of revamping a bit of their dare program, also, obviously, with Human Services, also, um, kind of these tearaway sheets that officers could leave behind with information, both about, like, our Human Services, kind of local programs, but also to remind them about them about two one one and those resources. And then also on that, Deanna and Deanna have been working with the P V on the Human Services side, with Intan Schneider and some other people about kind of how did we also do more in terms of like training and engagement and these types of like leave behind information or how do we connect people back to services after the fact of, you know, so I think the partnership is going to be well, like it's always been good, I think it's getting even stronger. So it's great, the P V's been so open to it and but we have Deanna and the Human Services team and United Way getting involved, it's been really good.
Might might add to that, because I I the police commission, at the police commission meeting, Lisa gave a very good analysis of what's currently happening because there are some known homeless camps in town and how they're how they're handling it, they're, you know, reaching out to them, the police is reaching out to the people that are there, giving them the help that they need for those that want it and and anyway, and I think Deanna had in her very first month, was it forty-eight?
Yeah.
Well, the last month was forty-seven.
Wow.
So it's it's seems to be a that's only, you know, too much of data, but and I thought Lisa said she was going to try to get some data on the two one one aspect that we don't have yet, but.
Yeah, she's going to get that. No, we have three meetings between Human Services, the Police Department, and then also bringing in the warm shelter from Westerly and New London Home and Municipality in New London and a few other kind of interested parties, chaplains or the P V and a few others. But I give tremendous credit to, she was during half, most of them, the folks at the P V who got all of this, but they're like, we can go down and scoop up people who are homeless or what we're going to sign, we're going to put them in jail, like what is it going to do? We can keep moving them along, but we're not solving anything. So they came in and said, we want like a Human Services approach. And so they're starting they're starting with like a building trust and so getting people to go down to downtown parks and these other locations where we know they are with the idea that building trust, kind of engaging and doing dialogue, you can't make someone get services, but kind of showing that we're there, we're here to help, you know, anything you need and also they give you, you know, winter comes coming and if you want to stay locally and use the warm shelter, you have to be sober. So it's kind of an incentive built in to maybe seeking out some programs and getting assistance that then you can stay there and then to move into supportive housing eventually and to show that there are steps and that are hope. But Deanna's been great, the warm shelter has been wonderful and just kind of been hand in hand with that and like we talked about, we met with the folks at the Altria and they've created now a space for Deanna, she was down there once a week, does kind of case management down there, they're open to having a bigger presence of the warm shelters and trying to find funding to get more longer term case manager to go in a few days a week as well as some other other locations in in our area. But, you know, it's going to take time, but I think it's promising and it was just really a heartwarming reminder, like these are human beings we're talking about and they're having a really hard time and they should be treated with dignity and it is frustrating, they're tearing up parts of the park and, you know, people don't feel comfortable going down there, but hopefully this effort over time will work and it'll have a more long-term solution and just like keep on going back and forth between Little Rock Park and downtown Portland. But it's good, but yeah, it's a good team, you know. On a positive or hopefully a positive note, the Veterans Monument has raised mostly, very thanks to Stacy, forty thousand dollars.
Holy crap.
Yeah.
That's great.
But we still need another hundred forty.
That's right.
So we need help getting the fund, some upcoming events D C's helped arrange and with some others in the committee, like you said, Kennedy Promotion Community Chamber helped us get a dime to donate at Mel's Townhouse Primary on September twenty-seventh from noon to nine P M. So hopefully we'll we'll put it out, but anybody loves St. Croix, you can go get ice cream at Mel's and we appreciate her doing that. But also there'll be a Sunday, Monday, we'll get a table in downtown Westerly on October third from noon to five. We need help finding people to work that booth that's outside. So if you guys know anybody who might want to donate their time to that Sunday, Monday activity, then we'll have a Veterans Coffee House at Masonicare October seventh at nine A M. D C nine one four that. The B S W is doing one of their fish and chips, October eighth from three to seven, they said we have a table there and then the farmer, final farmer's market, we have a few of them, October twenty-third. Again, I think for some people to help volunteer at that one. But basically, yeah, we'll we'll have to brainstorm more, but Stacy's, I can talk about where it's at, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of letters to, you know, she versus him has helped identify all you vets who, you know, come through, story to that any point, we sent letters to everybody. She's applied eight grants and just so much effort and, you know, and forty thousand is amazing, it's more we've probably ever raised as a town for, you know, add hot kind of thing, but to get to that hundred eighty, almost two hundred thousand mark, you know, for we're concerned. So we're hopeful still that maybe one of these grants will come back with a bigger twenty-five thousand and then their name lives on the monument and we get maybe two or three of those, we're good. But we set Veterans Day as the deadline, if we don't buy them, I think we'll want to come back to it and brainstorm about doing a SIP request to the Fortified Man and figure out, you know, that great sheet, you know, if we're talking about this, how much is it per person, really when you break it down and can we of a town support that for our veterans to honor World War One today and future? Because we're just afraid it's not going to happen. It's been a lot of work for Stacy.
So should we have a line item in SIP now then?
We talked to Hattie, I think we're going to open it up just in case that way's there.
Yeah, we should put in a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hope I filled out the SIP paperwork today.
Oh, you filled out the SIP paperwork today? Did you put a dollar amount request?
Yeah, mhm. We put in a hundred and fifty.
Okay.
I didn't turn it in yet, but I haven't showed it to you yet, but I completed it today just because I want to get it turned in and.
No, I think that, yeah, I think I I I support that, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, done.
And then the final thing is this weekend is so fun, so we launched the quad town kayak trail for the Pocatog River, so it's Westerly's joint and North Donington and Huppington. And basically after years of work, largely from the Conservation Commission of North Donington, trying to identify a spot in North Donington, because obviously we have done the park, Huppington has a spot, put a spot in in North Donington and thanks to kind of different members of the tribe, they actually gave a piece of their land for the kayak trail in North Donington right next to Bloom Bridge and it's kind of perfect. So we we launched there, we went in, we paddled down the river, it really was, you guys haven't gone before, it really was absolutely beautiful and magical, there was like towels dripping off the water side and swans, it was so pretty. There is one spot by the Stone Mill that it does get a little bit like choppy and kind of shallow, but I mean, you know, it was, I'm not the most athletic person, I get it. I did get a little stuck at one time, but it was good. And then we got out there, so we're hoping we have these pamphlets and so if you guys have ideas of places we can bring them, we're going to bring them to some of the marinas and different shops in the downtown area and just and so if you other town, Westerly's doing it, Tree North Donington, but we'll also, I just laid to it, we'll do some neat social media and website posts to let people know about it, but it really is like, you know, it's only ten minutes, like we dropped our car at Donnie Park carpool, there was ten minutes to Bloom Bridge, so you have a car there and there and then, you know, it was a pretty easy trail, but it was really nice. So hopefully more people do it and it's getting out on the water and it's lovely.
How many miles is it?
It's something to think, it it can go way longer, like this is just the four town